I'd like to call the meeting of the Huntington Township Board of Supervisors to order. And I would like to recognize, have any veterans stand and be recognized before we have a pledge of allegiance.
Yes.
I served in the U.S. Air Force from 1972 to 1976.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on any agenda items? Seeing none, we will turn the meeting over to the solicitor for the hearing.
All right, so the ordinance that's being proposed to be adopted for this hearing is, well, it's been discussed before, but it's establishing a speed limit on Rolling Road, Orchard View Road, and Starners Station Road. Rolling Road, it's from Willow Lane to Cranberry Road, and the proposed speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Orchard View Road, it's from Myers Town Road to Oxford Road, again, 25 miles per hour is the proposed speed limit. And then Starners Station Road, and that's from Peach Glen, Lighterville Road to the township line, also 25 miles per hour. Additionally, it is proposing stop signs that stop at separate hand turns on Thicke School Road and Mud Run Road. It's actually two separate intersections of those roads where they intersect two different places. And it's, I don't know how to explain it. Not too many roads have two different intersections, but this one does. There's one that's up to the northwest, and then it travels down Mud Run Road, and then Thicke School Route picks up again from there. So basically, we're making the flow of traffic so that if you're going on Thicke School Road, you can continue always to the right without stopping, and everybody else would stop and yield to them. So any questions or public comment? And just as far as the speed limits, there was a speed study done by the engineer that determined what the road speeds would be in addition with the Roadmaster. Then the Roadmaster was the one that proposed the stop signs on Mud Run and Thicke School Road. All right, well, hearing no public comment, we'll close the hearing, and then supervisors, you can adopt it at this time if you wish, with the motion and vote.
I will make a motion that we adopt the ordinance as written.
I will second that motion.
Been moved in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed no, motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to, the minutes of the last meeting have been circulated. Are there any questions on the minutes?
I have none.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed no, motion carries. Bill list was also circulated. Any questions on the bill list?
What do we pay the borough for?
Fair Company's workers' comp.
Oh, workers' comp for the fair company, okay. I have none.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept the bill list as written.
I'll second that motion.
Been moved in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no, motion carries. I have a financial statement, please.
Okay, the financial report for November 9th, 2023, excuse me. In the general fund, total receipts were $24,932.92. Expenditures, $45,849.69. That made a, that's a balance in the general fund of $727,565.67. In the ARP, there was interest received, $20.92. Expenditures were $400, and that lets a balance in the ARP fund of $245,888.2. In the state fund, interest received was $2.75. Expenditures were $55,055.76. And that lets a balance in the state fund of $34,546.50, of which $34,382.3 is for equipment. So a balance in all the accounts as of today is $1,008,19. And so at the bottom of the report there is a total count says of one year ago, five years ago, and 10 years ago.
Thank you. Do you want to talk about your changing what you want?
Okay, up there on the wall is a Veterans Wall of Honor. And we ask any resident, anybody that ever lived here, whether they live here now, if they served in our armed forces, to please give us your name and what branch you were in, possibly when you served. And we would like to recognize you. And there's, there are some still to be added to that. But you don't have to have served while you lived here. If you lived here and you served, please let us know, we want to put you on the wall.
All right.
Oh, and there's forms over there to fill out for that, so.
And the secretary would like to change the bill list to move to the end of the month when the bank statement comes out, not the day of the meeting. So I would like to make a motion that we do that so that it's easier for her.
It's more logical for the auditors, for the state audit report that goes in. As it stands now, we always have 13.
Entries, yeah.
Yeah, because at the end of the year, still has to be accounted for. So although we don't have an actual bill list or financial report for it, we still have to make one because the year ends 12/31. So it would be so much more logical when the bank statements and so forth are all ending now on the 31st, or the, well, the last day of the month, the 30th or 31st. But before, it used to be whenever your accounts were set up, that was your anniversary date, that was when you got your statement. And that isn't what it is anymore. So that's what we're asking, if, I'm asking, if we can do it that way.
To make sure life easier and make sure life better, I'm all for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will make that in the form of a motion, is there a second?
I will second it.
Been moved in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed no, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the Roadmaster's report.
I've got the files all, the files and spreaders all ready to go. Started cleaning side gutters in the lower end this week. And I attended a ESM class for dirt and gravel road, low-volume road grants. So I completed that this, this month, is all I have.
And we thank you for your cooperation in attending that meeting because that was a stipulation for the application for the grant. Supervisors' report, I have nothing.
Nothing brought to my attention.
Okay, sentencing officers' report.
Paul, can I just make one comment while we're waiting for Gus?
Yes.
As to Chuck's attending that meeting, I don't want it, oh, Tom, sorry. I don't want it lost the significance of that and what we're able to do now in this township because Chuck is certified, and we can apply now for the grants. We've never done that in the past, and it could mean as much as $100,000 a year to us in grants because almost all of our roads are low-volume roads. So I, as a citizen, I want to thank Chuck for doing that, and thank you guys for moving that along to get that done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, all ready?
Okay.
Okay.
I think we have it, all right. We started with the, I issued a waiver letter to Lisa Smith over on Gun Club Road for resurfacing an existing deck. I issued a building permit to Steve Green on Old Harrisburg Road to remove a carriage house and build a 30 by 50-foot barn. Building permit to Mandy Singer, 35 Wendy Drive, for an egress window in the basement so they could have an office in the basement. An occupancy permit to Christine Yost on Slaybo Town Road for a bath and laundry addition to their house. An occupancy permit to Brad Wolf at 7140 Old Harrisburg Road to put a sunroom on an existing deck on the back of the house. And an occupancy permit to Mandy Singer, 35 Wendy Drive, for the basement egress that was issued for. There's, that's all the permits and waivers. There's a lot of permits that are working for rooftop and freestanding solar for personal use. They'll be coming in next month. All right, and JDI received a, the MPDS permit, and they told me they're going to be submitting a land development plan for the project. And also, they applied for a septic permit. They're going to upgrade their septic permit. What's there is basically for like a home, and they're going to have like 40 employees. So they're upgrading it for any future expansion. I have a subdivision that has been submitted to me for, on Oxford Road, by the Heedner family. They're selling an add-on lot to their neighbor, and that subdivision is split between Huntington and Tyrone Township. At the planning commission meeting, we had a discussion about updating the SALDO. Our engineer had a conversation with the county. They have some model SALDOs, and they're going to be at our next planning commission meeting. And we're going to discuss what we want to upgrade it. I refer everybody, I think everybody here gets the TSAT's magazine. There's a big section on zoning issues that townships should be aware of. Couple of the issues that the article lists is commercial solar plants, short-term rentals, Airbnbs. Anybody know how many Airbnbs we have in the township?
Any?
You don't, do you?
Yeah, not that I know of.
There's about five of them.
That's right.
Yeah, you didn't know that. We're lucky because some municipalities have them, they have wild parties. Because you don't want to have a wild party in your house, do you? So you can rent an Airbnb, and that creates problems. We live at the fringe of the Carlisle area, which has a lot of warehouses. And when warehouses were proposed for a community like ours, it can put an awful strain on the transportation that work. And so far, I've been able to find a cannabis store, but they're popping up all over the place, particularly if they legalize it in this state. And then, stormwater is a big issue. We don't really worry about it here because we have a lot of open acreage. But it can be a problem when you have a warehouse with a million-square-foot roof. And so anyway, all these things are, it'd be interesting to consider what is in that article because you might want to update our zoning ordinance. The other thing that, well, when you get to it, I'll get to that part. Yeah, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Solicitors' report, anything?
Paul, can I make a comment on that? You know, one thing, we don't have a strict requirement in our zoning that the land development plan that comes before the planning commission is precisely matching the land development plan that goes before the MPDS. So I'd like to just ask, and we've talked about this, planning commission, that Gus and Scott make sure that the next one that's going to be submitted is going to be the JDI. That that, they represent that that plan is the one that they sent to for MPDS approval. Apparently, they have approval already, or will reject it.
Well, then we have to make sure that the one we receive matches the one that they, the one that they submitted, though. Because it's kind of backwards. The typical way is they go to the township first, and then that is the one that's forwarded to get the permit. Well, they've already got the permit, so we need to make sure that the one that we get matches the one they submitted.
Well, we also need to list the procedure of how, what the order is, and who gets what when.
Yeah, and we're working on that, but it's not going to be done by next plan.
No. But we will make sure that that matches.
Thank you. Solicitors' report?
No, I don't have anything, a comment when we, Scott talks more about the JDI because their attorney reached out to me for something, so.
May I ask a question? May I ask a question of Solicitor King?
I guess so.
Attorney, I was wondering, and I may have missed it. Was the waste management issues with the money that was, you know, for the defaults, was that ever finalized by you? So. Excuse me if I missed it, but.
No.
I'm okay.
They, the last thing we did was we committed a compilation of all the charges that, for the missed trash pickups. We sent it to them and asked them to basically discuss if there'd be a resolution that they credit all of the customers who had missed pickups rather than go with the fine. And now that you mentioned it, I'd never heard back.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought I missed something, and I was interested in what they did, what happened.
No, they never responded, so, thanks for the reminder.
Has there been more issues reported to the township?
Gus, what?
On waste management, have there been, since Attorney King had had that Excel spreadsheet, has there been further complaints put in by the residents of missed trash collection?
I think I have three in my file, one was my wife. They got it resolved, but.
Oh, you personally got it resolved, that's interesting.
Yeah. And the other two people did also. Really, their performance, as far as I'm concerned right now, since the last rub off, has been very good. I mean, I can live with it the way it is, three in a couple of months, so.
So just out of curiosity, when you say you got it resolved, and the other people got it resolved, did you just contact Waste Management and then?
Yeah, I called Hardee, and I told them that these people were missed. And we get picked up on Friday now, so it sits there over the weekend. And by Tuesday, they got everybody. I even got a new toter with a yellow lid on it.
Okay.
I find that really interesting, that he can contact the head guy, and yet everyone else on your list, they have to go through you.
No.
They've always gone through Gus.
No, but I mean, there's a serious issue, and now Attorney King had to get involved, so. But that's, that's good that you got it resolved with the head guy, who promised we wouldn't have any issues. If you remember, he came, and we're not going to have any issues, so, thank you, Attorney King.
You're welcome.
Engineers' report?
Greenbrier Road, Culver, working on design changes to meet requirements for the dirt gravel road water road grant program. I redid the budget and increased, I've increased the estimate to be about $200,000 for construction due to the increased size of the Culver and having to reconstruct more of the road. Myers Town Road, Culver, the design is ongoing. I contacted Conservation District three weeks ago to ask Deb Muselman to take a look at that so we can get that pre-approved, so we can move along with it. But I haven't heard back from her yet. I think she might have met with Chuck.
She's going to meet with me next week.
Okay, she's going to meet with Chuck.
And I'm going to take her to the Myers Town Culver. And because what we're looking at a project up one Orchard View, and that's what she's coming for, to look at a project up there, and then we're going to swing down and just look at Myers Town, see if she has the time to look at Myers Town.
Good. And I received a phone call from JDI's engineer stating that they're starting to work on a land development plan in response to our concerns to their MPDS permit application to the Conservation District. So that's, going to get started then.
I have, I have a question. When they applied for the MPDS permit, didn't they have to have a land development plan in effect before, or not?
No, it's not required.
It's not required?
No, that's one of the things that we got to get straight.
I mean, it's not required from the state.
It's not required in our SALDO.
Or from the state, neither. The only requirement is that they notify the township and the county, not that they have to have an approved plan from the township or county.
And this is what their attorney had contacted me about, because he, he made it sound like right now, they're just putting fill on the property, they don't really have a plan yet. So that it's kind of opposite a little bit of what their engineer said, that they're preparing a plan and it's forthcoming. He made it sound like, well, they're just doing fill, then they'll come up with a plan.
There isn't any fill yet on that. The first thing they have to do is stormwater, and they have to install silk sock, which is a 32-inch silk sock, which to, at the lower edge of the property there is a barrier between where the fill is going and the wetlands to control stormwater. And none of that's done yet because there's corn on the field.
Okay.
But I met with Scott today, not this Scott, another Scott. He was in here and brought me the sewage plan for their expanded septic system. And we discussed it, and I told him that we need to get that information first for the, it's consistent with the big work that we have, so.
Okay, but you almost made it sound like the township was trying to tell them just for their dumping of fill that they needed a land development plan, but that's not.
Well, he's got it wrong, but I told JVI that they need to get, have a plan with us before they turn a shovel full. And that's a little bit of an exaggeration, but that's not the way our order is. But we need to see that stuff, too.
Okay.
Because we're the ones that are going to wind up living with it.
Yeah. All right, so that must have been probably where that comment came from. But if their engineer's addressing it anyway, then it's kind of like, it's already fixed. So it was effective, the comment.
All right, thank you. Is the engineer you're talking to a different guy than?
Yes.
All right.
And according to DEP's regulations in their site restoration requirements, their own requirement is that the product, to be eligible for a restoration, their project has to be ready to go, which means that they would have to have an approved plan. It's part of DEP's own regulations, so, so that's why they're having to prepare this land development plan.
All right, so that's, because it's a restorative project, you said?
Do they, do they have to restore their old dumping ground?
Hey, that's not ours.
No, I, I know that, but I didn't know if DEP or somebody was going to hold things up if they don't have their other site planned out.
Well, I don't understand everything that's up in Billsburg. The plan that we got is a more restrictive and specific plan on how they have to restore it.
I read, you know, the, the stuff Scott gave us. It's going to be a job keeping on us.
And that's, that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Scott. Do you have call reports from the Fair Companies Act this month?
Yeah, York Springs and Hyderbrook both turned in their reports. And York Springs, Dustin, can't remember his last name, he said he would like to come to one of our meetings and, you know, do a little, let us know what's happening at the Fairhouse, and that they want to get, particularly to have youth involved. to get, particularly to have youth involved. And so I told him that he's welcome at any time, that, you know, the firemen always have that, you know, they have a standing spot on our agenda. And, but please let us know, you know, like five days ahead. And he said, he will.
All right, thank you. Narama met last week. All the members of Narama went along with the operations vehicle except for Franklin Township. And there's still no concrete information on what we're gonna do with it yet. So they're still working on it.
Excuse me, is there a cost as far as, has that been figured out yet?
No, there has not been a cost figured out yet.
Okay. Because I believe you, you voted on waiting to see what the cost was before you.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's what everybody's been doing for about a year and a half.
Yes.
I believe this vehicle may see it.
Well, the vehicle is.
It exists.
Exists and is in our own township and it is there.
It's not gonna function until they actually decide.
Right. It's a little weird.
They took it to some, the parade and, and some function in Heidersburg and had people go through it and.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess it has some sort of function. It's a former FBI truck.
Yeah, it's, it has all the electronics in for a center for all communications at a disaster.
As a 911, yeah.
They used it at the collapse of the chicken house in Heidersburg and they used it at the PennDOT truck that overturned on 15. So it hasn't been used, but hasn't been used as Narama yet. We went on to old business. Greenbrier Road Culver progression and Chuck certification. I think we, I think we need another motion to apply for the grant. We have not done that yet for Greenbrier. We had a motion to use ARP money for that, which we have been doing on up till now. So I would like to make a motion that we apply for the low, low volume road.
Dirt and gravel.
Dirt and gravel road.
You made that motion?
Yes.
All right, I will second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we are, we're all set on that one? Okay. And the Meyers Town, we have not made a motion at all on the finances of that one. We have been just going for reviews. So I would like to make a motion that we also apply for the low volume road for Meyers Town and that, and the additional would also be spent on ARP money.
I will second that motion.
Moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Run.
Question. Are there gonna be possibility to hit the one in one year and the other in the other year? Are they gonna both be in fall in the same year?
No, to get the, the biggest return for our grant application, we'll keep it in separate years.
That's what I was, that's what I was getting at.
And they have the grant.
Yeah, they.
This is working really well for us right now.
If they fall in the same year, then we only, we don't get.
Well, we'll separate.
That's the way we get the most if we.
Right. I understand. That's what we're getting at.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, we'll move on to.
Question.
Budget. Do you discuss how that one?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
You wanna handle that first? Is that the one you wanted?
That's the one I wanted, yes. Looks little from here. Okay, our 2023 budget kind of fell apart because we couldn't get the Greenbrier Road Culver going for one thing. And we had talked about a truck out of the, out of the Highway Aid Fund, and that didn't happen either. So we have ideas on how we'd like to continue on with the culverts. We're not sure if, if it'll be, need to be paid in the year 2024, if it'll actually go to 25, if we would order a new truck. Same with that. Don't know if it would happen in '24, probably '25. So we got a lot of dumb knows in there. If you start at the top, we're no longer reading backwards. We rearrange this thing, whether the state likes it or not, to read across. Okay, the first column is general fund, second column's highway aid, third column is ARP money, and we don't have anything in the government funds. So they, those three add up to the final column there. And in that top bracket, the first lines, all those empty lines that go down to the second dollar figure, that is what we estimate to have on hand at the beginning of 2024. And so then our next batch of numbers, the 300s, those are receipts and what we expect to receive. That 430,000, excuse me, sounds high to me with the taxes, but I, I think we may hit it. And that will all be your earned income tax, taxes from the county and, and transfers and so forth into the taxes. And there's licenses and permits, fines and forfeits, interest, rents and royalties, or royalties, intergovernmental revenue. That's tricky because most of your intergovernmental revenue, if they give it to you, it needs to go back out. And that 25,000 that's in there, that includes like that almost 20,000, it'll be like 18, between 18 and 20,000 of that form fare insurance that they send to us in September. And then we have the divided between the fire company. So that comes in and goes out. So, you know, it's not ours. And then moving over into the next column, the Highway Aid Fund, that 169,064.77, that's a firm dollar amount. The state already told us that they're giving us that. It'll come in March. And that, again, we have to use on our roads. But so it is ours, you know, it will be used on our roads. 20% of it, which is like 38,000 or something like that, has to go into an equipment fund that you can only spend for equipment. And that, you can save your equipment money to get yourself a big piece of equipment. But the, the rest of it, you're supposed to spend on the roads and, and you're supposed to spend it within two years. We've never had a problem spending it within two years because, you know, we keep, our, our roads are kept up. And that third column there, that 100,000, that is what we expect to get from that DEP grant. And so, you know, that's the receipts there. Let's say that intergovernmental revenue, you need to look at it both ways. The charges for services, a lot of that is Gus's permits and so forth. And miscellaneous revenues, 1,000, and, and the other financing sources, 1,000. They're just estimated sometimes. Last year, we had like 1,600 in there rather than 1,000, but you never know what that's gonna be. A lot of times, it's refunds or something that you spent last year. Like York Adams Earned Income Tax, they do that thing that's over their expenses. If they get more in than their expenses were, they divide it up in between the different people that, you know, pay it in. And because it was from a prior year, that, that is considered miscellaneous. So looking across what we expect to, to receive, that's 505,000 in the general fund and 169 in the Highway Aid and 100 in the ARP, making 774,000 and some odd dollars. And then that would give us, you know, added to what we already have at the beginning, would give you like 1,713,000 to work with, to have on hand. Okay. And then the next batch under that second gray line is starting our expenses. Okay, the 400 accounts, those are account numbers over there on the far column, those are expenses. And so the general government is 100,000. And that is, any of your 400 accounts, that's paychecks other than the road crew that is working anything on this building. This is a four, the building is 409 and, you know, you do have expenses in a building. And public safety, some of that is Gus's, anything that's spent on public safety, part of their, even their paychecks. And that's, that's another thing that's hard to explain here, is that in the first column of the general fund, all of those have a little bit of payroll in them. And they don't give the payroll their own account number. So when you're seeing general government, you're seeing payroll. And you're seeing that 430 there for highway, roads and streets, that 145,000, that's gonna include all of the road crew's payroll in addition to the 150,000 that we want to do a, a road project with. So if we take that 164,000 in the Highway Aid Fund, take the 38 out of it, so you're gonna have like 120-some thousand to go to that 150,000-dollar road improvement project. So we gotta take the rest of the 150 and, and take it out of general fund, which is perfectly allowable. And then the, that 335 there is what we expect to have in the ARP money, what we have in that 100,000 that we're, are supposed to be getting. And as far as we know, we're gonna spend that on those two culverts because Scott said that, you said 200,000, right? And, and if we got the two, 200,000s, we got 400,000 there. So again, that 335 will go towards 400 if it's this year, and, you know, if it's 2024. But if it's 2025, well, then we'll have a little more for that year. But then that makes, in the, in the 430 account, that makes 645,000. So, you know, that's, that's your big expense right there. And then that culture and recreation, that is simply donations to the senior citizens and to, what is culture? Oh, the libraries, yeah. And then that 480 account down there, miscellaneous. I don't know why they call it miscellaneous, because that's insurance. The 480 is insurance and that's a biggie. It's on the road crew, it's on the buildings, the equipment, the fire company, workers comp, you know, it's, and, and it's gonna take, you know, at least the 50,000 there. So that makes, you know, 410,000, that, okay, so it doesn't have a gray line on it. The state made this for them, not us. Okay, so that, the third set of numbers up from the bottom is what we expect to spend. And we expect to spend, and that's, that's a big, you know, this is big for us, the 910,000, and it's because of those culverts. And ordinarily, we wouldn't be spending that much. We've never spent that much, ever, ever. And so that would lead us in the general fund, about 794,000 and the Highway Aid Fund only 8, 8800. And that would lead us at the end of the year of 803,000, which is way lower than we've been in many years, but you can't help what you have to do. You know, you gotta do those culverts, you gotta do the roads. So you gotta pay your help. So that, that's my proposed budget. And, you know, if anybody wants to discuss anything, you know, like the trucks or anything, that's, that's what this is for, to discuss it, rearrange numbers, and then we have to adopt the, the final budget at our December meeting. So this will be available for anybody's inspection. We'll put a ad in the newspaper that this is, the proposed budget is here, and if anybody wants to see it, they can by appointment. So.
Good question. Do we have that money to pay for this for 2024? And we expect to have the money, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Because, and, and the next thing that you would put up there would be that.
I don't have that other sheet. I don't have that other sheet. Are you, are you looking that comparative thing?
Yeah, the York Adams Tax.
Oh, that I got.
Yeah. Because you'll see there that what we get, like, like you said, the 430,000 dollars that we expect to get from taxes, we're gonna get close to 400 in, from the earned income tax. We've already got 309, that less square right there, it's not square.
Rectangle.
Rectangle. That is what we got so far from earned income tax. So that is our, you know, that's, that's our big receipt. That's what we use. And prior to this time, that has always been our, you know, our, our working budget. And now with this ARP thing, you know, that's gonna come, it'll be gone, and I'll be glad it's gone. But, you know, we're, we're working with it.
Are there any general questions now from anybody other than make an appointment to see this? Seeing none, we will file that.
Okay, well now you need to make a, we, we need to adopt the proposed budget for advertisement and then we adopt the final one in December.
I make motion that we adopt the proposed budget for audit or for.
For advertisement.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Motion carries.
One more word about that was last year, we received 824,000. Those were our receipts. So, you know, we're, we're not exaggerating by thinking we're gonna get that 900 there because we got 824 last year.
Okay, advise the public of the register and recorder of deeds of fee changes. Okay, that is for.
It's their fee changes, their schedules. Remember when they had to adjust them because the state didn't have a budget? Now, apparently, the state has a budget because they're going back to what their fees were before. And they're available here if anybody wants to see them. And they're available here if anybody wants to see them.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Dates and times for the reorganizational meeting and regular meeting in January.
Okay, the state requires that we have our reorganizational meeting on the first Monday of the year. But that being a holiday, they move it to Tuesday. And then the auditors follow us, so they would be on Wednesday. So we want to approve that for advertisement also. And then I'm asking, I can't have, you know, a business meeting ready by January 2nd. Can we go, instead of combining the business meeting and reorganizational meeting, can we keep our January business meeting on the 11th?
Okay, I will make a motion that we have our reorganizational meetings for the supervisors on January the 2nd, for the auditors on January the 3rd, and our regular January business meeting on the 11th.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
Been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries. I'll discuss the soft closure of Land and Sea Services in January.
Okay, you have his letter there.
Wilbur Schlatter is the owner of Land and Sea Services. He says, "I plan to start the process of retiring and soft closing Land and Sea Services at the end of '23. We will only be dealing with applications and building permits issued for projects that we have started in '23 and ones that lap over into '24." So I would like to make a motion that we seek proposals to do the services that Land and Sea has done in the past. And Gus will tell Pat what those services are.
Well, I did some research on that. There is an agency, the one that handled the appeals board for us there in Chambersburg, they have an office now in Gettysburg. It's been there four years. And they do, they parallel what Land and Sea has done for us. I want to really, they've been great because they were a local agency. If someone came in with a plan drawn up on a piece of paper, Wilbur worked with them. This other outfit tells me that they do that too. They, they're sending me some information. There are two other agencies, but they're not located in Adams County. And then I got the names of, so I'll solicit information from them also. They do function for some of the township. The agency I'm looking at does work with Strabane and Tyrone and Reading, I believe. So they're almost local.
What, what's the name of it?
It's, hold on.
It's Pennsylvania Municipal Code Alliance.
Then that's it, yes.
Pennsylvania Municipal?
Code Alliance.
Okay.
Yeah.
They go by P M C A. They're, they're all over the county.
Well, I would like to get this done because everybody that Wilbur has done work for is going to be looking for somebody else to do.
Oh, absolutely. But Wilbur said that he'll basically be working through '24. I mean, he'll finish up the projects that carry over. If anything else comes in that, I mean, he's not going to take another whole school on, but the projects we have, he would stay with us until we get something lined up.
Okay. Thank you, Gus.
You want a second for that?
Pardon me?
I made motion to solicit.
Yes.
Advertisements. Is there a second?
I will second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussing approval of the purchase of a used pickup truck. We had, as Pat said, we had budgeted a, for a new truck last year for this year that we, with the change in road crews, we thought we did not need, but has been brought to our attention that they, the use of a pickup truck to go for parts and to haul stuff around that's not real heavy, that you don't need to throw it up on a dump truck, would be advantageous. So Chuck, would you like to explain that?
Yeah, what it is, I, we're looking into a pickup because the simple thing of it is, we run a 550 around for getting parts and so forth like that. I could make a trip to Gettysburg or Hen or Carlisle or something, and it'll use a quarter tank of fuel when I get back here. And it's a V10, so I'm looking at a, a savings of that too. And also that 550, we use as a pile truck. It is a pile truck. It's just a smaller version of a pile truck. My theory is we shouldn't be wearing that out just to do little stuff that would be more cost effective with a pickup and so forth. Also, kind of looking for a reading body that we can store all our sign material, any type of chainsaws that we can go out and address any type of this, things that come up a tree down or something. But we don't have to run a big truck all over the place for. You know, so I'm not looking for new ones, I'm just looking for used ones.
Any questions? I make motion that we go through the approval process or the bidding of a used pickup truck. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries. The payment for the Maristown Road Culvert, we have already talked about. Inform the peg deck of the PennDOT Railroad Closing Work Plan for Peach Glen, Iddville Road, November the 13th and the 14th.
Where they putting that? Where they putting that?
They're putting the railroad crossing in.
Oh, they took out the truck aisle.
Um, I guess they're rebuilding one there and the rail of the plant there.
Yeah, well, that's the one they took out with the truck aisle, actually, put it in the other year.
Yeah, the state's, they're, I guess the railroad is still there, but the state's closing the road.
Right.
And then the.
The same thing that they had before?
I have the.
Or just be closed two days?
Uh, yep, I got word that they're going to be detouring traffic for one Georgetown Road, so.
Because I can walk that way, son. It's not one of the.
No, the, they're closing the 13th or 14th. They're detouring traffic up Georgetown Road and out to the Hune Road.
Well, the Hune Road, too.
Beachland Road.
Conservation District, Christina Andrews, mosquito and tick reports. Are we supposed to let her know if we have problems with that?
Right.
Okay.
I just let tickle my cat to death.
If you have any problems with ticks or mosquitoes, you're supposed to let Christina Andrews at the Conservation District know all about it. So subdivision and land development, do you have anything else to say on that, Gus?
No, at this time.
Okay, thank you. Right to now requests read to Ganji, any and all correspondence between township officials and employees with PSACs from December 19th, 2022 to January 31st, 2023.
Okay, I have two more days to respond to that, and I will respond to it in the two days.
Upcoming meetings, the planning commission will meet Monday, November the 20th at 7:00, and our next supervisor's meeting will be December the 14th at 7:00. Public comment.
I just have two short ones. Is there anybody else? No.
No.
Okay, shortly before this meeting was called to order, and when Mr. Geis arrived, I placed, I gave him a, and placed before each of the supervisors places what I call my petition to redress grievance package that I had read at the board meeting on January 12th, 2023. At that time, I expected my questions that was contained in that package to be answered at a public meeting. And I indicated that I would send the questions to the office. And due to preparing with an attorney and my parliamentarian concerning the defamatory minutes and then this, these other minutes where they needed to be corrected, and thankfully, those defamatory statements were expunged. So I didn't have time to do all that. So tonight, I handed in a complete package of my complete comments. All the emails that I referred to are attached there for your convenience to answer the questions. So I'm submitting that package and once again requesting the questions be answered at the next scheduled board meeting. The second thing was, Google sends me reminders with emails when you send them out. September 15th, I sent an email to Secretary Davis asking when the website would be updated with the new engineer Longstrat's name, who I believe was hired in '22, and Solicitor Todd King's name. And he began January '23. I didn't get a response, and I'd like to know when that expects to be updated because I think it's disrespectful to both these professionals who work so hard for the township. And their names are not acknowledged on the website. And I know you have to get it through the county, but here it is, you know? So I was just wondering when that's going to be corrected.
I think I did it that day. I think I did it that day.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, I didn't see.
In one place, it has Pete Martin and Bob Campbell. In another place, then it is right, and Liz Scott is our engineer and Todd.
It's, like, when I bring it up, and maybe it's my phone, I, I get the homepage, the first page, and on there, it's incorrect, and that's why I was wondering, like, what, you know?
That's correct, that's right.
Yeah, I did immediately when, when you sent that to me, I
Yeah.
Sent it to Shane Rowden, R-H-O-T-N, at the county, and he wrote back and said that he corrected it. Well, so there's our.
Well, he had it listed
Two places.
In the right place, but it's listed two places on the, I don't know what they call it, the homepage.
Yeah, I call it a homepage.
That's wrong, exactly.
Well, I, I will, um.
Okay, yeah, I never heard about it, and, and like I said, Googled, said, oh, said like three weeks ago, whatever, and it brought that up today, so I, I thought I'd check with you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely get ahold of him.
Anything else? Not a make motion, you mean re-adjourn? Is there a second?
I will second it.
Been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries.